Hang on one second here if you would. Do you have an ear for that? Let's try it there, yeah. I don't know that one got bumped. My soul inside exile was out on life's sea, so burdened with sin and distress, till I heard a sweet voice saying, "Make me your choice." Then I entered the haven of rest. I yielded myself to his tender embrace, in faith taking hold of the word. My fetters fell off and I anchored my soul. The haven of rest is my Lord. I've anchored my soul in the haven of rest. I'll sail the wide seas no more. The tempest may sweep or the wild stormy deep. In Jesus I'm safe evermore. The song of my soul, since the Lord made me whole, has been the old story so blessed of Jesus who will save whosoever will have a home in the haven of rest. I've anchored my soul in the haven of rest. I'll sail the wide seas no more. The tempest may sweep or the wild stormy deep. In Jesus I'm safe evermore. Oh, come to the Savior. He patiently waits to say by His power divine. Come anchor your soul in the haven of rest and say, "My dear Jesus is mine." If you know the song, sing it with me on the chorus. I've anchored my soul in the haven of rest. I'll sail the wide seas no more. The tempest may sweep or the wild stormy deep. In Jesus I'm safe evermore.
You know, sometimes you don't think there is a haven of rest. Sometimes you just think everything's conspiring against. But you know, the reality is that there is one. It's found in Jesus. And we're gonna sing one more song before Brother Gavin comes and Galvin comes and preaches for us, 345, No Other Name. And this song was, it's interesting. The words were written by Philip P. Bliss, who died in a train crash. But the music for this version of it was written by James Curz. And it says he was born in 1975 and he passed away this summer in a car accident. And our choir has some, we have one book that's just all of his songs. And so, you know, this is a testimony from someone who's no longer with us. And so, we be thankful, there's one offer of salvation. Let's stand and we'll sing together, please, No Other Name, 345. One offer of salvation to all the world make known. The only sure foundation is Christ, the cornerstone. No other name is given, no other day is known. Jesus Christ, the first and last. He saves and He alone. The door of heaven stands open wide today. One sacrifice is given. It is Christ, the living way. No other name is given, no other way is known. Jesus Christ, the first and last. He saves and He alone. My only song and story is Jesus died for me. My only hope of glory is the cross of Calvary. No other name is given, no other way is known. Jesus Christ, the first and last. He saves and He alone. Thank you. Good singing. You may be seated.
All right, well, good to see each one of you here tonight on Monday night. You can go ahead, actually, go ahead and start turning your Bibles to Galatians 5. And that's where we will be tonight, Galatians, chapter 5. Well, I hope today wasn't too much of, as they say, wasn't too much of a Monday for you. How many of you, it was a Monday? It was definitely a Monday, and Monday things happened to you, yeah. I don't know what happened to us, but last night, like, everything collapsed. So Campbell got a fever in the middle of the night and he still has this fever. So if you don't want to touch me, that's fine. I feel, I feel... Okay, I don't feel, I don't have a fever. But then, also during the night, then I threw my neck out. So, you know, how many of you have a bad back? I have a bad back, okay? I have a bad back, all right? So you know there's a difference between being sore and when your back is out? So right now, my, so right now, my neck and the upper back is out. And I'm just kinda standing here like this. So just, yeah, as long as I don't do any fast moves, you know, as long as I don't trip or anything, I will be okay. Boy, if I trip, it's gonna be bad on the back as opposed to the knees. But so there was that. And then Hannah during the night also got, she got some kind of a migraine. And I don't know if it's pregnancy related or what, but she's got some kind of a migraine going on right now. So we have just had a day and, hi. So we're just, we're kinda surviving. And some of you may be as well. I'll tell you, one of the greatest compliments someone paid me was actually, I think it was at the very first multi-night revival meeting that I ever preached. This lady said, "I have been in pain all day today, but I would not miss the service tonight for nothing." And I just thought, wow, that is, that's awesome. That is, that made me feel good. You know, it really did excite me and I was thankful for it. So thank you all for being here. I know you're busy, you have things that are going on, you got stuff you gotta catch up on, so do I. And but I really appreciate that you're here. I want tonight to be a, obviously, I want every night to be a help, but especially tonight. I'd like for tonight to really be a help in this way. You know, yesterday, especially with the two passages we looked at. I mean, we saw some pretty, we really dealt with some pretty serious things of our need to be right with God, to be pleasing God, and the things that God wants out of our lives. And so, one of the things I wanna help you with tonight is one thing for me to say, okay, hey, you need to be right with God. And come on, this is wrong, this is right. You need to be doing what God says. It's another thing for us to actually see it lived out. And so, I wanna help us tonight and have something just, tonight's gonna be extremely practical from Galatians, chapter 5, on help with walking with God. So we're gonna look at that here tonight. By the way, I thought I'd mention this. As you have been inviting, of course, keep on inviting any night, but boy, Family Night is gonna be the big one. You know that already is on Friday. Let me just tell you a couple of things that you'll find at Family Night. You know, when you have, of course, when you're with family, remember back to, you know, having kids and all that. You know, one of the things you do a lot, what we'll do on Family Night are some things that I hope you included as a part of your family. For instance, on Friday night, one of the things we will have that will be different will be games. Now listen, relax. We're not playing soccer inside the auditorium, okay? So you know what's really funny was last week. I had, the pastor said, "You might wanna just clarify," or two weeks ago, "clarify about games and such, because I think there's some adults that are nervous that they're gonna be forced to play soccer or something like that." And he said, "I wonder if they're gonna show up if they think they have to play soccer?" And I said, immediately, you know what I immediately thought? They act just like teenagers, those adults do. If they think the game is not gonna be fun, they don't show up. That is exactly what happens at all these teen rallies that I run. And so, so relax. You will not be expected to play soccer. In fact, you will not be expected to participate in any of the games unless you would like to. But we're gonna have, and it's nothing that'll be inappropriate or anything. I think you'll find you really enjoy it, 'cause that's a part of what you probably have done as a family. We're gonna have music, because that's a part of, I hope you include somehow, music in your family. And of course, we'll have preaching time, because the Bible is important as well. And the Bible should be a part of our family. And so, we'll have all those different elements. And by the way, I'm just saying this. And right now, I'm looking over here, I'm looking right there, I'm looking over here, is if you smaller people show up, I'm just telling you, I, I am not extremely skilled. But I can't, do you like balloons? Anyone here like balloons, adults? Any of you adults like balloons too, yeah? I have these, I have these balloons that I can, that I blow them up and I stretch them out and I make them into different things. So I actually can make balloon creations. And so, I'm gonna, if you kids show up, I will make one on Friday night as well. So I have a very special one. I love making it Family Night. So if we have kids show up, I will make sure that that happens. So you kids, come on out and bring your friends with you. And so, it's okay, if you have, if you wanna bring like 40 friends, that's fine, we'll move all the adults over there. Your 40 friends can sit on this side and we'll have ourselves a good time on Friday night, okay? Let's go ahead and pray. And let's ask God's help as we get into this passage. Lord, thank you so much for the scriptures that we're looking at. I pray that you would open our eyes to them, help us. As I know things are, have been difficult. Monday, things have happened on a Monday. I pray that you would please help us to focus, help us to be able to concentrate. And I pray that you would bless, bless each one of these folks for having been here tonight. Open our eyes to your Word, dear Lord. And I pray this in Jesus' name, amen. Well, my travels obviously take me to a bunch of different places. And so far, we have been to, I haven't preached in every state, but we have gotten to travel to every state except for Hawaii. So if y'all know any preachers out in Hawaii, call them up and say, "Hey Matt, he's an okay guy. His wife's great." But so you probably wanna have them out there, 'cause that's our last place we need to get to is Hawaii. But we get to go all over the place. One of the most unique places that I think we've gotten to travel to is the place, you've probably heard of it before, called New York City. Anyone, has anyone ever been to New York City? Who's been to New York City, raise your hand, okay? Yeah, it's a good amount, it doesn't matter if we're all the way, if we're all the way out here in California. There's plenty of people who make it to New York City. It's just such a unique place. So many cultures and so many different people and a totally different way of living, even more so than city life in most other cities. It is just downright different. I've gotten to preach several times at a church on Staten Island. And that's been, that's been a lot of fun. That's a place you don't get to a whole lot. You don't hear about that in the movies. It never gets destroyed like Manhattan does, you know? And so, but I've gotten to preach on Staten Island. And then I've also gotten to preach over at, also, believe it or not, I have actually preached, there's a church in downtown Manhattan. So I don't know if you've ever, if you've ever seen that, ever been to Manhattan and would think, wow, really? Like a church actually down in Manhattan? Yes, there was a church in downtown Manhattan. And when I got there, it was neat. The pastor said, "Okay, you're going to, I want you, when you get here to rent a car and I'm gonna have you drive to our church every night." And that's what I thought too. And I was like, drive into New York every, okay, well, you know, things are special here. And he said, "Relax, all the traffic is coming out of New York. You're going in, so it's gonna be decent going in." And he was right, actually. It was pretty good going in. So I got to go into, got to go into New York every single day, drove in, that was pretty cool, getting to go and be a part of that. But you know, New York is such, is so special. It's its own animal. For example, I remember, you know, if you go to the downtown area, Times Square and all that, anyone ever been to Times Square? Been there? You know, you have to be careful how you walk in Times Square, because there's so many people. And in fact, I remember reading an article, reading an article by a guy. He was a New Yorker and he actually talked about, he wrote an article to us non-New York City people and said, "If you ever get the chance to come to our city, you are welcome here, but would you please learn how to walk?" And he wrote a whole article about how to walk in New York City. For example, he said, "If you're slow, keep to the right." And if, could I add in there, "And know who you are?" 'Cause some people think, "I'm fast." And the rest of New York is like, "No, you're not." Yeah, so he said, "Don't be afraid to separate twos." For example, you know, my wife and I, we like to hold hands. He said, "It's not a tragedy. If for two seconds you have to let go to let someone slide through, 'cause there's so many people moving, and then just reconnect in a moment." He said, "Don't be afraid to separate twos." He said, "Don't stop short to gawk at something." You know, like people walking down the, walking down the street and all of a sudden they go, "Hey, hey, look at that building." And so they start taking pictures and all of a sudden, all the people start lining up behind him. And so he said, "Don't do that." He said, "Don't text in revolving doors." He said, "Us New Yorkers are not great at it. So if we're not good at it, you definitely are not," is what he said. So he said, "Don't text while you're going through revolving doors." And he said, "Keep up the pace and apologize if you bump someone. Don't pretend it didn't happen." I remember once watching, I was in a car, and this was not in New York, but watching this lady basically bumps someone with a car and then keep going on like it never happened. And it's like, what? You know, what are you doing? And he said, "In New York, if you bump into someone, don't pretend it never happened. Just say, 'Excuse me,' and move on." In other words, if you want to walk in New York City, and can we say this, and survive, you have got to know how to walk. Can I put this to you tonight? Is if you want to walk this Christian walk, because I love the picture of the Christian life is a journey. It's not a one, it's not a two-step process and then you're done. It is a journey with a lot of different steps in it. And God says, and God describes it as a walk in 1 John 1. He describes it as walking in the light. Here in Galatians 5, he describes it as walking in the Spirit. But as we, if we're going to, can we say this? If we're going to walk with God and survive, like as in not quit on Christianity and not quit trying to please God, we gotta know how to walk the right way. Because I don't know about you, but there may be some of you sitting here who would say, you know, maybe you're failing so badly at something and you're trying to walk with God. And in essence, you say, "If something doesn't change, I'm about ready to stop trying to live for God." Maybe nobody knows it, but maybe you have a battle with pornography. And if something doesn't change, you're about ready to quit trying to fight it. Maybe nobody knows it, but maybe you struggle with alcohol. And though nobody knows it, maybe your thought is, you know what? If something doesn't change, if God doesn't do something for me, I'm about ready to quit trying to give up alcohol. Maybe it's in the words as you say, maybe it's in the attitude that you have. Maybe it's in your relationship with your spouse that you say, "If something doesn't change in this, I'm about ready to quit trying to make my marriage work." Folks, we need the principles that come from Galatians, chapter 5. And a very short verse here in verse 16. But before we get there, Galatians 5:13 says this. Notice this if you would. Verse 13 says, "For brethren, you have been called," notice this, "called unto liberty." You know something, Christian, is that God says He has called every one of us to liberty. You know what liberty is? You know, one of the features of New York City. Our, me and my wife, our absolute favorite place we stopped was the Statue of Liberty. Her aunt, my wife's aunt was gonna do, they were gonna go to New York City and do a whole vacation there. And they ended up being sick or something happened with family or something like that, they couldn't go. And their tickets were about to expire. They bought one of those city passes, where you get, you spend a certain amount of money and you get tickets to all these different cool things in New York City. So they handed it to us and said, "Here, you're going up there. Might as well use it before they expire." And so, here we are with a fistful of tickets and in one, we only have one day after I finished preaching in Staten Island. We had one day, and in one day, we didn't have kids, so we can make this happen. In one day, we went to the Statue of Liberty, to Ellis Island. We got to the World Trade Towers. We went to the museum that was there with them. And we went and we climbed to the top of the Empire State Building. Well, actually, we rode an elevator. We got to the top of the Empire State Building. We went to Times Square. We ate at the only Chick-fil-A in New York City. That was pretty cool, if you know what that is, that's pretty cool. And we got to, you know, we got to walk down Times Square. I feel, I feel like there was something else that we did. But we got to do all that in one single day. And we took advantage of it, and New York took advantage of us. There was some disease on the subway that my wife picked up that's later down for about a week or two. But, but you know, our favorite one was the Statue of Liberty. Because if you know anything of American history, that is a precious sight. It is the symbol that says, we, that says, are you, you know, the words, "Give me," "You're tired, you're poor, you're oppressed." He says, you know, the lady, Liberty says, "You can find that rest here. You can find opportunities here in America, because in America, we have freedom." Yes, our nation is not as wonderful as we wish it was. But still, we have the most wonderful nation on planet Earth. God has blessed us incredibly. And one of the things He's blessed us with is liberty, freedom. And so, verse 13 says, "Brother, you've been called to freedom." So he says, "You're free." Well, that makes me think, free from what? Now, some people really go bizarre with this. And they say, "Well, that means if Jesus says I'm free, then I'm free from rules, I'm free from standards, I'm free from, from to be told what to do." Folks, that is nowhere taught in the scriptures. Actually, what is taught in the scriptures is that when you are saved, when you accept Jesus as your Savior, He says you are free from one thing, from having to do good works in order to gain eternal life. Can I tell you this? I am thankful that it doesn't, that it does not depend on my good works for me to go to heaven. If heaven depended on us doing a bunch of good things or not doing a bunch of bad things, we'd all be shot. We'd all be done. We'd all be going down. Because, because none of us can be good enough to enter heaven. You say, "Well, how do you know?" Because none of us is perfect. Heaven is an absolutely perfect place. It is a holy place. It is the dwelling place of God. And no unforgiven sin can come into heaven. You say, "Well, what if I do a lot of good? What if I do way more good than my dad?" Doesn't matter, that heaven is an absolutely perfect place and no one in this room is perfect. None of us are. And if you think you are, we'll get either your parents or your spouse up here and we'll have them tell us all about how you're not perfect, okay? Because we just, we're not perfect. And that's why our good works could never be enough to help us gain eternal life. But you know what? Because we know Jesus as our Savior, we're free from having to rely on our good works to gain eternal life. But you know, if you know Jesus as your Savior, you are also free from the penalty of sin. Sin is an awful penalty, the penalty of hell. Hell is a real place and the wrath of God must be poured out on sin. But you and I, if you know Jesus as your Savior, you're free from the penalty of sin? You're free from the guilt that comes with sin? You know, sometimes people walk around thinking, "Well, I'm just kind of a second-rate Christian, 'cause I just have all this sin in my past." Folks, if Jesus has forgiven it, then He has released it. He has pardoned it, and you don't need to be dwelling on it anymore either. We're free from having to do, this is great. We're free from having to do good works in order to gain more favor or attention or love from God. Do you know that God is not gonna love you better by the end of the week? If you do a lot of right things, God's not gonna love you more at the end of the week. He already, from the moment you were created, He has infinitely loved you. And that infiniteness can never dwindle. No matter what you're, no matter in your future, if it's gonna look really good or if it's gonna look really sinful, God loves you with an infinite love. We're free from having to do good things in order to gain more love, favor, or attention from God. But you know, we're also told that we are free, if you know Jesus as your Savior, we are free from bondage to having to serve sin. 'Cause I don't know about you, but so often I feel like, "Well, there's nothing I can do about myself. I'm just gonna always be bound by sin. I'm just, these are just my sin habits that are just gonna be with me to the end of my life." You know, Galatians 5 gives us some very freeing scriptures. Look at it, Galatians, chapter 5 and verse number 16. This is a short verse, but you need to look at it. Galatians 5, verse 16 says, "This I say then, 'Walk in the Spirit, and ye shall not fulfill the lusts of your flesh.'" Can I tell you what? There's some, there's some hope and some promise wrapped into that verse. He says that if you will, let's just do this for now. He says, "If you will walk in the Spirit," can we say this? "If you walk in the Spirit," whatever that means. Just pick up that phrase, we'll come to it in a minute. "If you will walk in the Spirit," whatever that means, he says, "you will not fulfill the lusts of your flesh." And by the way, you know what's great is when we talk about, when we talk about how, oh, getting victory over sin, a lot of times, we look forward towards heaven as, as is proper, as the ultimate place where, hey, once we get to heaven, once we drop this robe of flesh, once we are united with Jesus, once we're in heaven, there'll be no more struggle with sin. There'll be no more listening to temptation. I mean, what a wonderful thing. And we'll no longer be displeasing God anymore in heaven. That's gonna be a great thing, to no longer be displeasing our Savior in heaven. But you know what God says? You know what the verse indicates? Is that God is saying that on this side of eternity, we can have times when we're seeing victory over sin, on this side of eternity. Now listen, of course, I'm not teaching that, you know, some people think, well, you know, some people, boy, they just get to this point in life and they just never struggle with sin anymore. I don't know where people got that, but if they just like, open their eyes, you know, a little bit, we'd all, they'd realize, we all still have struggles. We're also gonna face temptation and we'll never become sinlessly perfect on this side of heaven. But what God says is He has made provision that you can see victory over sin on this side of heaven. So what does He say? What He says needs to happen is we have got to walk in the Spirit. So this is what I call the impossible statement. It looks impossible to say, "Well, how can the world, could we have victory over sin on this side of eternity?" Well, He says, "If you wanna see victory, you need to walk in the Spirit." What does that mean? All right, so here we go. Let's start with the word walk, okay? I'm not trying to talk like you're dumb. But let's just, let's just define our terms, could we? You know what walking is? It's taking a series of steps, okay? It's a set of steps. Now, you realize that throughout a day, you take a series of steps. Your journey, your journey through life takes a series of steps in a day. So it's gonna look like this. And it's a series of steps where you're gonna have to decide over and over, you're gonna have decisions and choices that are gonna be presented to you. Am I gonna do right? Am I gonna do wrong? So let's just say, you get up in the morning. So you wake up and of course, you're extra exhausted because, you know, you threw out your neck and got a headache and got a fever all night, you know? So, but you've gotta decide, okay, am I going to do what God wants? I'm gonna have my devotions. So you, so you got the choice, you say, "Well, you know what? I'm gonna do what's right." So the first step of my day is I'm gonna make the decision. I'm gonna read my Bible and I'm gonna have a little bit of time of prayer, even though I don't feel like it, I'm gonna do what's right. So you have your devotions and then you have your devotions. You gotta hurry, 'cause you gotta get ready for work. You're getting yourself ready for work. And so, as you get yourself ready for work, finally, you jump in your car and you're gonna be late. And you're, well, maybe you'll be right on time. You know, if you get the right kind of lights and you get there right on time. You ever been there? You know, if you know, okay, if the turning light is green, oh, I've had this. If the light is green when I get there If the light is green when I get there, or if it's just turning yellow, I'll make it, this will be just perfect. And then of course you get behind that one person that clearly has nowhere to be between now and Christmas. You know what I'm talking about? And so they're, they're not, they're not in any hurry. And so, and so now you're faced with the, with the decision, am I going to choose to be angry? Or am I going to choose to have patience? And so again, we need to make the right choice and be patient. Then you get to work and now you're late because you know, the person who doesn't have to be anywhere till Christmas was, you know, took their time. And so you get late to work, your boss says, where you been? You're ten minutes late and now you want to lie. But the right decision is, well, I'm going to tell them the truth, whether it's good for, whether it benefits me or not, I'm going to tell the truth. And so after that happens, you know, now you're feeling kind of wow, you're feeling down. And then all of a sudden up to you comes that coworker who always annoys you. Oh, you don't have those, do you? No, you know, how many of you are not ashamed to say you had a coworker who annoyed you? Raise your hand. Go ahead. Yeah, exactly. Yes, I've covered me too. I knew him by name. Okay, I can still tell you some of their names. And so here comes the coworker who annoys you. They just have a skill for it. They went to school for it. Okay, and, and so they come up to you and they say something that annoys you. And now you're going to make the decision, okay, am I going to be kind or am I going to be unkind? And of course, the right decision again, and the right step to take is I'm going to be kind. Now listen, folks, it's all fine and good for me to say, hey, in this situation, you ought to have your devotions. Hey, in this situation, you ought not to get angry. Hey, in this situation, you ought not to lie. Hey, in this situation, you ought to be kind. It's real easy for me to stand up here and say, hey, this is what you ought to do. It's another thing for it to actually happen, isn't it? So as I take this walk, these, ready? These steps along my journey with God, how in the world can I make it so that I actually start making the right decision more often than the wrong decision? All right, that's number two. We've seen, number one, we've seen the impossible statement. Number two, we're going to see the infinite power source. God says this, your walk, verse sixteen, Galatians five sixteen, this walk, he says, is to be done. What is the verse say? In the spirit. Okay, so this is our key phrase. We got to understand what does God mean when he says we're to walk in the spirit? Because this is how, you know, when we come up on these decisions, we're, we're going to choose right over wrong. God says they have to be done quote, in the spirit. Okay, so what does that mean? Okay, we need to know what in the world does that mean? Well, here's an, here's the idea. So, so listen, I'm, I'm going to tell you something. I am, when I went to school, you know, Bible college, I took six semesters of Greek. Let me tell you, it hurt through every one of them. I am not, I'm not fantastic at languages. My sister is much better at languages than I am. Um, but she's fluent in French and of course English too. And, but she never took Greek, I don't know, but she probably ace it. But I'm not great at languages. I got it, even though I took six semesters, I need help with this. So, so I'm not trying to impress you at all with this Greek, but I'm going to tell you something. The Greek scholars have something that they call, when they have a preposition such as in the spirit, they call it, uh, they, this, this specific prepositional phrase, in the spirit, is something that the Greek scholars call a dative of means. You say, what is that? What is that supposed to mean? Don't worry about the word dated for now, just understand this is that it's saying that this is, it is a dative of means, which means this. That prepositional phrase is giving you the means to be able to walk. So it'll look like this. Let's, this is, okay, so let's pretend, now this is major pretend, okay? Because for some of you, some of you have, have served in our, in our armed forces. And so this is going to set this scenario, I'm going to paint for you, is going to sound kind of stupid. Okay, so just please remember, remember when we were kids and we'd all say, hey, let's pretend that, okay, that's what we're doing right now. Okay, so let's pretend that, that we are in the military and you have been given a, you've been given a mission, an objective. And let's say your commanding officer says, okay, come on up here. Sir, and so you salute him and it says, okay, your mission, your objective is coming in. He brings you to this spot and he says, okay, you see this narrow pass? It's kind of coming through these, these tight mountains. There's a narrow pass coming down through here. He says, there is a battalion of enemy soldiers, which from what I read is going to be several hundred soldiers at least. Their, this battalion is going to be coming down this narrow pass. It is your job to stop them. Oh, I mean, well, nah, no, this is not going to go well. And so, and so you're thinking, what? This is not good. Well, doesn't the commanding officer care? Is this all he wants? He just wants me to get killed? And then your commanding officer says, now hang on, relax. I've got a means to make it happen. Come here. And so he said, and so he has you kind of climb up the side of the ravine with him and you didn't even see it, but perfectly camouflaged. In the side of the ravine is, is a little machine gun nest. You never, you couldn't even see it. It was so well camouflaged. And so you thought, you get in there, wow, and you see a gun, it's got a perfect position to be able to see the ravine and to be able to take out enemy soldiers. There's a massive stockpile of ammunition there behind you. And so your commanding officer says, here you go, sit down with this gun. That battalion, they are going to pass through this ravine. When they do, you have a gun that will do the work and you have sufficient ammunition that will be able to take out every last one of them in that battalion. Well, okay, so then you notice that here comes the battalion, they start coming down that ravine. And when they get in range, you open fire and I'm going to tell you what, it starts working. How cool is that? It starts working. Now let's just say that you're maybe about a third of the way through accomplishing your mission of stopping this battalion. And all of a sudden you go, you know what? I'm doing pretty good, aren't I? I feel like I'm doing pretty amazing at this, at this war job. You know what? I, I, I am just taking it out, you know what? I don't know that I even need this gun. I'm just going to run down there myself. I'm going to go hand to hand with these people and I'm going to show, I'm going to see my face, I'm going to show them what's what. Guess what's going to happen? You're, that'll be it. You will be, you will die and the mission will not be, will not be successful. Again, please, that was a, let's pretend, that is a very made up scenario, but it points out this. In other words, it's this, the commanding officer gave you an objective, a mission that for you was impossible. But he said, I'll give you a means that can make it happen. You know what God has done with us? He has given us, could we say, a mission, an objective that seems impossible, that really is impossible for you and for me. You know what that is? He says, be ye holy, for I am holy. He says, choose you this day whom you will serve. In other words, do right and don't do wrong. What, what a, what an objective that God has asked us to do. But you know what God has done is he doesn't just say, just get in there and do it. He doesn't say, just grit it out, push through it and get her done. He says, no, I'm going to give you a means. You know what that means is? Verse sixteen, the Holy Spirit. He says, in order to walk with God, he says, I've given you a means that means is the Holy Spirit. Folks, when you accepted Jesus as your Savior, can I tell you something? You got way more than your name written in the book of life and a mansion over the hilltop. Okay, you got a whole lot more than that. We don't even have time to get into all the things that God did for you when you got saved. But one of the things he did for you, it says in Galatians two twenty, it says, I am crucified with Christ. Nevertheless, I live, yet not I, but what? Christ liveth in me. Now that you know Jesus as your Savior, Jesus lives inside of you. You go into Romans chapter eight and we read all about the Holy Spirit, which of course Jesus, the Holy Spirit, you know, uh, two persons of the trendy of God. And so the Bible tells us how the Holy Spirit dwells within us. And the Bible says that by the power of the Holy Spirit, that by God's, we'll just say by God's power, God says he can overcome the issues and the battles that you are going to face. Frank, can I ask you a question? Of your temptations, because I don't know about you, I know what mine, I know what, what my, I think of my two most prominent temptations that I fall to the easiest. You probably could think of two as well. You can think of those two right now. Can I ask you a question? Did Jesus ever commit those two sins that you struggled with so much? Did he ever commit them? Nope, not one time. You know what that tells me? Jesus must be awfully powerful. He must have an awfully big abundance of strength. If he's able to overcome the temptations that I fall to, seems like every single day. And you know what God says? You have access now to his strength. That is the means that God has provided. He says, you now have access to the very strength of Jesus Christ. The Holy Spirit will give you the strength of Jesus Christ and he is the one we must depend on. That's why Philippians four thirteen says, I can do all things through Christ, which strengthenedeth me. Hey, can we do this? This might help you remember this. Okay, now I don't, it's, I think it's not as bad if I tell you it's coming. Let's learn a little bit of false doctrine tonight. Would that be okay? If we learn just a little phrase of false doctrine, okay? Here's a, here's some false doctrine. So watch for this because you might see this out in the world around you. Okay, here's some false doctrine, ready? I can do all things. That is false doctrine. You might have been given a free Christian calendar where it shows, you know, for the month of April, it's got some person out jogging. And this has got a silhouette, you know, of the sun, of the sun going down and it says, I can do all things, period. You know what you ought to do with that calendar? Go ahead and take it down, write on that page, false doctrine and mail it back to whoever mailed it to you. Because that's false doctrine. You know what? You cannot do all things. Do you ever get tired of people saying, God won't give you more than you can handle? I'm, I'm pretty sure I've said that before. Guess what? God will always give you more than you can handle. He will never give you more than the strength of Jesus Christ can handle though. And you know what's great? Is that you have access to the entire abundance of the strength of Jesus Christ. Because you know Jesus as your Savior, you have access, full access to all of his strength, folks. It's about time that when it comes to, remember these stages, these steps? It's about time that when it comes to, okay, am I good, oh, my goodness, am I going to have devotions? Instead of saying, all right, I gotta push myself through this. It's about time to start saying, God, I need your strength. I'm not going to want to do devotions much more. It's about time that when we come and we're tempted to get angry, when we get stuck behind that person, then instead of saying, all right, I'm going to be kind, I'm going to be, I'm not going to get angry. Not going to get angry. Well, you already failed, okay? It's about time we say, God, you've got to give me power. Cause I'm going to get angry here in a minute. You've got to give me strength. It's about time that when the boss confronts us about being late, that we, and we're tempted to lie, that we say, God, you got to give me strength. I cannot be telling lies. I've got to be a truth teller. God, give me your power. And when we face the annoying coworker and we're tempted to be unkind, instead of saying, okay, I'm, I'm going to do better. I'm not going to, I'm not going to be unkind, I'm not going to be unkind, I'm not going to be unkind, I'm not going to be unkind. How about if you say, God, I need your power? God, I need your strength. Jesus, give me your strength. For the Holy Spirit has, has the ability to give us the strength and ability to overcome every temptation that Jesus can overcome. And he can overcome them all. What a wonderful thing. You have a means, an infinite power source who that can enable you. It's not really a what, it's a who, that can enable weak people like you and me to overcome our temptations. So then here's what I want you to see then, number three, I want you to see the incredible promise. He says at the end of verse sixteen, he says, if you will walk, take these steps of obedience in dependence on the Holy Spirit for his strength, it says, ye shall not fulfill the lusts of your flesh. He says, you won't do it. That's what God says. That's what his word says is. He says, if you'll start depending on his strength, he says, you won't do the desires of your flesh. You know, the, the flesh, that is that part of you that still craves and desires all the sinful things. It's that evil part of you that still desires wrong. And God says, you shall not fulfill the lusts of your flesh. Now let me ask you a question. Is anyone out here, anyone out here a grammar? I won't call you a grammar Nazi, but you would say, I, I'm big on grammar. Like I maybe taught English or maybe you're big on grammar. Yeah, I didn't love it, but I could sure, I could sure correct, I knew, I knew my grammar inside and out, especially by twelfth grade and in my early years of college. I mean, I knew the grammar rules inside and out. I could write a really grammatically solid paper. Um, can I tell you, how many of you have ever, especially you, grammar people, English teaching people? You ever heard of something called the double negative? You ever heard of that before? The double negative? So in English, we're not supposed to use something called the double negative. You know what that is? That's like if, if someone says to you, if someone says to you, oh, hey, uh, uh, or if you ask someone a question and they say, oh, I ain't never done that. Okay, technically that is bad grammar. And when you say, you're not supposed to use two negatives in the same sentence. So if you say ain't never, that's two negatives. So you're technically, you're not supposed to say that in one sentence. But it doesn't stop Americans, you know, because we have liberty, right? And so, you know, we, we use double negatives all the time, even though technically we're not supposed to. You know, I ain't never done that, you know? And we say, we say those kinds of things. And you know what the thing is? We know what we mean. Did you know that in the Greek, you know what's great? You were allowed in the Greek language to use double negatives. In fact, you could use as many as you wanted. How nice. You could use as many as you wanted. Do you know that here in verse sixteen where it says, walk in the spirit? He says, and ye shall not fulfill the lusts of your flesh? Do you know that word says, you shall not fulfill? It's actually a double negative in the Greek. So in other words, Paul is trying to emphasize as loudly as he can. In essence, he's saying, if you will take your steps of obedience in dependence on the Holy Spirit, you ain't not going to never know how fulfill the lusts of your flesh. That is in essence, if you were standing up in front of us today, he would have said it something like that. You ain't not never know how going to fulfill the lusts of your flesh. In other words, he's urging us, come on, access the strength of God, ask him for his power. So when we take our steps of obedience in dependence, we do them in dependence upon the Holy Spirit. Second Corinthians two fourteen says, now thanks be unto God, which always causeth us to triumph in Christ. Folks, we better include the in Christ part. Some people want to say, thanks be unto God who always causes us to triumph. No, we don't triumph. We triumph in Christ. For Christ is the one who gives us our power. Romans eight thirteen says, for if you live after the flesh, ye shall die. But if you through the spirit do mortify the deeds of the body, ye shall live. Folks, again, no one is saying, again, no one is saying that, oh, everybody, if you just keep working real hard, you'll get to a point of sinless perfection where you'll never struggle with sin anymore. No, 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 it's not what the Bible is saying. The Bible says we will always face temptation and more than likely we'll face many failures till the end of our lives. But folks, we don't have to fail. You know, for the longest time I thought that I had to fail. I thought that, you know, because people, honestly, people would quote that verse to me that says, a just man falls seven times, but he rises again. You know, so I just thought, well, you know, that's me. You know, I just, I just sent this, these are my two sins. I'm just going to send, I'm just going to commit them all the time. And every time I do them, I'll just ask forgiveness, I'll just keep falling down, just keep getting back up, keep falling down, keep getting back up. And I figured that was the way you're supposed to live your Christian life. Now, if you've ever done any kind of boxing or sparring, you'll know this. You can get knocked down and get back up. But if you get knocked down enough times, eventually you'll not want to get back up. The same thing, if you, if you and I, if we keep getting knocked down and we keep falling into temptation and just giving in, eventually I'll bet you there'll come a time when you will want to no longer get back up. And that's why God says you need to learn to walk in dependence upon the Holy Spirit, the means that God has given us. Four, verse seventeen, the flesh lusteth against the spirit and the spirit against the flesh. These are contrary the one to the other. It's a, it's the idea that the flesh and the spirit. By the way, I would advise, this is something, now I think I've used this illustration before. I don't anymore because I don't think it's the best for it. But maybe you've ever, if you ever heard the flesh, the spirit described as, well, they're like two dogs and they fight it out. Whichever dog you feed more is the one that wins. Folks, really that's not a good illustration because remember your flesh and the Holy Spirit, remember who is stronger? The flesh of the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit is stronger every time. Okay, he is stronger every time. It's not like if you feed him more, he becomes stronger. Honestly, that sounds more like Greek mythology to me. Because the Greeks believed that they prayed to their gods more, that they became stronger. I mean, that's messed up. And God does not become stronger if we pray to him more and, and such. God is infinitely more powerful than our flesh. It would be like a fight between a mastiff and a chihuahua. It wouldn't be a fight. The mastiff would always win. So what is the picture here? He says, the flesh lusteth against the spirit and the spirit against the flesh. The verb there lusteth against is a verb that actually means to set up and display your desires. Instead of maybe instead of using like two dogs, I think a better illustration to describe the verb there is the idea of two salesmen. Ever been, you ever gone to like a fair or a festival or something? And you know, there's different things you go do and you're having fun. And then you walk down that one, that one lane that has all those businesses set up. And they all want you to come look at their stuff. And you're thinking, oh, I just want to get down there to where the corn dogs are. Oh, but I have to walk down this aisle and the Avon lady's going to grab me and she's going to make me sign up for some, some magazine that I don't want. Oh no. And so you're walking down this aisle and you're trying to keep your eyes straight ahead, you know, like that. Because these salesmen, they want you to buy stuff from them. Do you know that the flesh and the Holy Spirit, they're like two salesmen who they set up, they display their desires. The flesh says, hey, you want this sin, let me show, let me show you all about the sin. I've got some displays up here about how wonderful sin is. Here's some brochures that will tell you about how sin is going to be the benefit that you want. And the Holy Spirit is over here saying, no, listen, look at all my displays about how Jesus satisfies. Here's some brochures about how God can bring satisfaction to your life and how his power can help you overcome sin. You want to obey the Lord. And so these two salesmen go back and forth pulling at our will. Folks, it's not that, some people think that as we go through life, as you get older, some people think as you get older, you just get stronger. That is not true. That is not true. Oh, you just, as you get older, you just become spiritually more strong. That is not true. I've met plenty of elderly people who were spiritually immature. And I've met people in their thirties and in their twenties who were very spiritually mature. You know, if someone is in their whatever, sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties, whatever you consider to be old. And they're living for God, you know what? It's not that they became supernaturally incredibly spiritually strong because they're now ninety-two years old. You know, more than likely what happened was they picked up on a pattern that if you'll put your dependence on the power of God, he can enable you. And he can do it every time you'll ask him for strength. This is why, this is, by the way, this is the passage that has at the end of it. It says, verse twenty-two and twenty-three are verses you've probably gone to before. Says, but the fruit of the what? The spirit. Hey, you know, often we often jump right in and say, oh, the fruit of the spirit is love, joy, peace. You realize this, you know, all those things that are, all those fruit of the spirit, those things are results of what happens when we are accessing the power of the Holy Spirit. Sometimes we go through that list, we say, okay, love, joy, peace, long suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, temperance, wow, nine things. Well, well, let's see, I'm not doing joy very well. I'm definitely not doing meekness very well. Well, well, let's see, I'm not doing joy very well, I'm definitely not doing meekness very well. And you had, I'm not long suffering, but I think the other six I'm doing well. So I need to work on these six and, or no, I'm doing good on these six, so I need to work on these three over here.